Okay, you have, you got it. You got your duties.
Yes, sir.
Ready?
Oh.
You have to give me a second.
Miss Athing.
Like, uh...
But isn't he, like, popular?
Like baseball.
But he started out doing constituent service for here in the President's office.
Uh, good morning to my colleagues and audience members. Um, my name is Ed Reissinger. I am the Chair of the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We are here this morning to conduct our 14th voting session on text amendments to, uh, City Council Bill 12-0152, Transform Baltimore. Uh, electronic files are being made available on the City Council's website. The draft amendments can be downloaded from the Bill, uh, 12-0152's file page by inputting the following link into your web browser, which is www.baltimore.legistar.com. Uh, also, a copy of the draft amendments has also been placed in the Bill folder, which is located in the Executive Secretary's Office here at City Hall. And her name is Natwana Austin. Um, the Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the proposed amendments page by page. We will vote on as much as we can during today's two-hour session. Uh, also, public testimony will not be allowed during the voting session. City agencies may be questioned about particular amendments being discussed by the committee. We are joined by my colleagues, Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton to my left. Across from Councilwoman Middleton is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. To my immediate left is Councilman Jim Kraft, the Vice Chair of the Committee. We are also joined by Angela Gibson, who is here representing Mayor Stephanie Rawlings Blake. To my far right is, uh, Ms. Kara Kunst, who is representing the President of the City Council, um, Jack Bernard Young.
Thank you.
And to my immediate right is the staff person to the Land Use Committee, uh, is Jennifer Coats. There are commi-- there are, uh, handouts, committee handouts, one on my councilmember's desk. These are communications from, uh, and I'll start off. These are, these are communications from councilmembers. Councilman Brants, Councilwoman Clark, Councilwoman Costello, Councilwoman Kraft, Councilwoman Middleton, Councilwoman Reissinger, and Councilwoman Specter. There also are, uh, organization law firms on behalf of others, I guess it's their clients. Um, the Maryland Department of Transportation, Jefferson Court, Community Association, Remington Neighborhood Alliance, Southern Engineering Corporation, uh, Rosenberg, Martin Greenberg LLC, Gallagher, uh, Everlyus, Villas, yeah, Jones LLP, AB Associates, Stonewall Corporation, Ballard Spa LLP, uh, acronym CARE, which is, uh, Community Association, Inc., the Mount Washington Improvement Association, Venable LLP, Hemorrhage, Hemorrhage Associate, Inc., JR Wallman LLC. Regards to constituents, we have a list is, uh, Elizabeth Homer, uh, Berenick Kostoffin, Joanne Musipus, Kathy Latrobe, uh, Rebecca Satcher, Janet and, uh, Alan Yersby, Holly Coleman, John Hammond, Char- Charles and Darcy Norton, Louise and William Cornell, John Biles, Gwen McDonald, Ms. Beth Manning, Robert Olsen, um...
Yes. Yes, here we do.
Okay, thank you. Wendy Olsen, Anne Margaret Olsen, Barry Gregg, Laura Nelson. Um, all these communications is in the Bill folder in the Executive Secretary's Office here at City Hall. And I apologize if I, uh, mispronounced anyone's name. Uh, at this time, uh, we will start on the voting session, which is Title 18, um, on page 314. And Title 18 is nonconformities, um, and we are with starting on purpose of Title 18-101. So, um, right now, I'm looking at, uh, T 705, uh, page 44, Title 18. This is agency, there's, um, page, there can't be page 44.
Mistaken the page number.
What is it, page 152?
Yeah, somehow.
No, it can't be, by the way. No, T 7, that's Title 17.
I have three amendments that were on my sheets that don't have numbers and haven't come up on the schedule. And they start on page 314.
That's T 705. There must, it's a, must be a misprint here.
Let me, let me find the correct place.
Huh?
Paying attention at all?
I wasn't either until we said it was on.
It's Title 8, they say Title... No, what, they, 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 it's the wrong page, yeah. We're on Title 705, T 705, but they're saying it's page 44. There's no way. Well, I don't think. Go ahead. What, what, what is?
It would be, uh, Mr. Chair, I believe it would be in 18-307 would be the place to put this. Um, just for the context, this is, um, intended to, uh, permit a certain leniency if a nonconforming retail goods with alcohol, in other words, a liquor store wants to convert to another use. So, we want to encourage that. And even though they are nonconforming as a liquor store, if they want to, uh, be more lenient. And so, that would be an 18-307, uh, change in use. And, um, I probably should go in line, after line 17.
So, you're adding...
And to create an exception that, um, a noncon-- except for a nonconforming liquor store may convert to another C1 use. In other words, the, the situation, I think you're familiar with the situation. You take a liquor store that's in an R8 area and somebody wants to, you know, do the right thing and reduce the amount of liquor density and change it to something else. We don't want them to be stuck in a, a disincentive. So, um, that would be to insert that when it's allowed. I would think it would be after line 17 on page 317. Um, and say that except nonconforming liquor stores may convert to other C1 uses.
Other C1 use.
Mm-hmm.
We'll use the microphone. Microphone, microphone.
Right. It doesn't change, it doesn't change the underlying zoning. It simply incentivizes, it makes it easier for them to be something else commercial as opposed to, you know, many of these are, are very commercial in their nature. So, the buildings, they don't lend themselves to a house.
Exception for liquor stores zoned residential.
Yes.
So, you would say all that, so it wouldn't be just for...
Well, it would be nonconforming liquor stores. That's zoned residential. If they were, if they were conforming, they wouldn't be zoned residential. I mean, they could be some...
So, they want to make it a store? Huh?
And they could convert to a C1 use.
Actually, we couldn't do, I'm sorry, we couldn't do the C1. They would have to be able to convert to the list of uses under neighborhood commercial. Because the C1 uses would, would make it eligible for, um, another liquor store.
Neighborhood, neighborhood commercial.
I'm sorry, neighborhood commercial is the wording there.
Okay, give us an example. If they want to make it a barber shop or a textile store...
Barber shop, you know, a shoe store, a hat store, even a, even a corner store, but not, you know, the liquor.
Okay, so, where's the list? Can we go over that list?
The list would be the list of the neighborhood commercial, lists in, in Title 14.
Could you go through the list?
We would cross-reference to, and, and I apologize. It should be cross-referenced to Title 14, uh...
Okay, all right. You want to make a motion? Okay, you get it?
What motion?
And we can get you the exact cross-reference. It would be Title 14, the neighborhood commercial 14, um...
Okay.
Well, so...
The list of uses under 14-328, which is art galleries, art studios, daycare, offices, personal services, restaurant, and retail goods, no alcohol. Uh, 14-3...
We are joined by Councilwoman Bill Henry.
I just lost the page number. Um...
Uh, you know, can we, can we have this, excuse me?
And I apologize, I missed that yesterday in preparing our amendment.
This is a big, big deal.
So, page 227.
What is it, two what?
On page 227, section 14-328. It would be a cross-reference to permit the liquor store to establish as a neighborhood commercial.
This is very important, so...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I, wait a minute. Hold it. We need something in writing. Second, I've got places in my district that don't want commerc-- they want these places gone. Now, you're saying in this draft, you're going to phase them out in two years.
Right.
Okay? Now, you're throwing them art galleries. I don't really, I mean, I, I, not the ones I've got in my district are going to become art galleries, but...
Well, other retail goods. The, the way the Planning Commission voted this is they believed if we are amortizing the liquor stores out, in other words, they're going to leave in two years, that there should be some incentive or ease in becoming a non-liquor use. And that is the goal of this amendment, to make it easier for the property owner or the business to become some other non-liquor-related use.
And I, and I see in the listing, it clearly states no live entertaining or dancing, no alcohol sales, so that would... Also, I, I wonder if we could include, like, help, well, you do have restaurants. But, um, I'm just thinking of some of these food deserts and how, you know, they have a chance to conform to some healthy, um...
That would be the retail goods, yes. Mm-hmm.
I'm, it's fine.
It's fine with me. We really, this is important enough for us to have a written amendment.
We will get that written amendment by 2:00.
That's when I will vote for this.
Can I, may I ask a question? Um, so, when this 328, right, 14-328?
Yes.
Clarify. Are these the uses, it like, are an RMU?
Yes, similar. Mm-hmm.
Okay. They're similar or they are the same?
Uh, there may be one or two more in RMU. I'd have to double-check.
Okay. Now, when you have art galleries and it says no live entertainment or dancing, you have an art gallery. What about performance art? In an art gallery?
You know, this...
I'm just...
Oh, I'm sorry, here's...
I'm just saying, what is the difference between performance art in an art gallery and live entertainment?
That's not a defined term.
Am I correct in knowing, in, in saying that there is no definition for performance art in the code that would distinguish it from live entertainment?
Probably not. I think that would be a matter of an interpretation. One person's art is another person's entertainment, you know? It's a little bit of a gray area.
Hence, arts and entertainment difference.
No, I mean, the thing is, I have an arts and entertainment district. And so, if someone were to convert, and I have a lot of corner bars and other things. So, if someone were to convert something into an art gallery in the area of the arts and entertainment district and then wanted to have performance art in the gallery, would that be prohibited under the no live entertainment? Or, and if it were dancing, not in the sense of, like, dancing to a disc jockey, but dancing in the sense of performance dancing, is that prohibited under this?
It's certainly not the intent to prohibit it.
I don't know what the intent is, but I'm saying...
I understand, we don't have the zoning administer, administrator here today. Um, I'm sure he's come across that under the current code. And I don't know how that is handled, but, you know, most art galleries don't just do one type of art. They, you know, one week they have one thing, one week they have another thing.
Ms. Roy, would there be, would there be, um, some way or some desire to clarify this between...
I mean, I think that you'd want to do it on a case-by-case basis and have a, a judge look at whatever the constitutional law is at the time. I mean, this is a First Amendment issue. You'd have a harder time defining it than you would dealing with a problem.
Okay, same with dancing, performance dancing, rather than...
Right. I mean, you, you wait for someone to complain and then, once you get there, go to a court and then have them argue their First Amendment versus our reasonable regulation.
Thank you.
Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to apologize profusely for being late and missing the beginning of this conversation. So, if what I'm...
This is the beginning.
Okay. So, just to make sure that I'm understanding the request. Is the request that we somehow include packaged goods sales as a legitimate use under neighborhood commercial? Okay, what, so what, so, yeah, then what is, what is the request? What is the...
I don't have a request, that's the councilman.
It's, 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 it's a request on page 317, lines 16 and 17, which says a nonconforming use may not be changed to any other use except one that is allowed within the zoning district located in which planning has just realized that when we take out liquor establishments which are residentially zoned, she wiz--
Councilwoman?
They're not, excuse, they're nonconforming uses. And, and it has been recommended that they be exa-- that they be allowed to change to the uses in neighborhood, um...
Ah, okay. Yeah, let me, let me, let me, I mean, Councilwoman said it, but let me just reemphasize, reiterate, the T 705, T 705 to, to the members. As a neighborhood commercial is intended to allow for reuse, reuse of existing non-residential structures in a residential zone. The goal is to provide for specific types of uses generally compatible in residential neighborhoods in these buildings. Okay?
Okay. All right. So, do, do, do we have language?
I, as I stated before, I will get you final language at 2:00.
Motion to defer for language.
Second.
Okay.
What is it, what was that?
Motion to defer for language.
Okay, we make a motion to defer for language on, on, uh, 705. Uh, all those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say nay. The ayes have it, and we added another deferral.
This is the liquor caucus. We can put them all out of business.
Yeah, make sure you use the microphone.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've gone far deep into this 18. And I have three, um, proposed amendments that precede it in, in enumeration. So, I mean, I'll, I'll be glad to wait till the end of the chapter or whatever you want to do. But I have three amendments that are not listed on the, the T-list, but were submitted and have been submitted to you. And, and they begin right on the very first page of this chapter. So, I, I just want to say, before this chapter is over, I'd like the chance to ask my, you and my colleagues to consider them. Thank you.
Yeah, we can, um, we're on page, we're, we're starting on page, uh, 314. So, if you want to, if you want to go with it now?
I would, I would appreciate that, Mr. Chair, if I could.
Are you ready for that?
I, I'm ready.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
We are joined by Councilman Nick Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Make sure everybody has a copy of this, please. It's, please, now. Here. And there. Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Um, on page 314, there is a definition of nonconforming lot. There's something about that that defies logic. 314, line 18. Noncon-- it says, "Nonconforming lot means any lawfully existing lot that does not meet the lot area or lot with requirements of the district in which it is located." What does that mean? I don't know. So, I've put in a line that I thought would explain it at least in residential districts, which says, and I would hope that you would consider approving it. "In a residential district, a nonconforming lot is one lacking the required square footage to construct a single-family dwelling unit in that district." Because I... Excuse me, what? No, I said, oh, I, I don't... Uh, detached, I mean, uh, I mean, I mean, the basic unit, so I guess a detached.
Yeah, and, and that's more...
A detached.
That's more of a question, I think, for the Law Department is if it just says "single-family dwelling unit," um, should, should it say detached to clarify that that's the amount of lot that you're talking about? Because a single-family dwelling unit that was part of multifamily might have smaller lot requirement.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, um, yeah, a dwelling unit is only, can be a room. A room is a dwelling unit. If you look at the definitions of dwelling unit, a dwelling unit is defined as one or more rooms in a dwelling that are used as living facilities for no more than one family.
What should I be saying? I'm trying to say that there is no such thing as a nonconforming lot on its own. So, it must be in relation to something else. Therefore, I'd like to relate it to the basic house on its own. Well, I'd, help me with the terminology.
You have a dwelling row house definition.
Well, how about what, what we're using in the tables for housing? No one knows? A what?
It could be an empty lot.
Yeah, the, I... Well, it is empty. We're talking about lots.
These are lots.
And later on, we're going to suggest that any nonconforming lot that was non, that's been a lot for a while, we can put any size house on it we want. I want to define what a nonconforming or what a conforming lot is now before we've got the Empire State Building on a chicken coop.
But this is just a lot.
I know, but what's a nonconforming lot?
A lot is, I...
No, I know, there's nothing nonconforming about any lot until you put a structure on it. But a lot is being defined here without a structure on its own. It does, it doesn't make sense.
The, the reason one defines...
Let her, let her clarify.
The reason one defines nonconforming lots in a zoning code is to make it clear how the regulations are interpreted to those lots. A nonconforming lot is one that exists but is smaller than would typically be required to build on in that particular zone. So, it's going to vary depending on what the zoning is, if it's R1 or if it's R8, if it's R1, you know? So, that, that is why we use the language we did, which says it is a lot, that it legally exists. You cannot create nonconforming lots, just so you understand. We are not allowed to create new ones through our subdivision regulations. But it's a lot that exists that does not meet the lot area, in other words, that's square footage, or the width, and that's new because we added width requirements of the district, that's the zoning district, in which it's located. I'm not sure it could get any simpler than that. Doesn't say that.
Okay, so let me, so let me give an example and let me see if this works. Okay, so, if you were in an R8, right? And on a corner, you had a lot that was 10 feet wide, vacant lot, okay? You wouldn't be able to build a house on that lot because the lot would have to be, the house would have to be 16 feet wide in order to build a house in an R8. So, I think it's 16 feet wide to build a house in an R8, not including whatever setback or anything else, if you had to have a setback. So, if you had that lot, that would be a nonconforming lot. If you wanted to build a house in R8, you couldn't build it on that lot. You know, you would have to combine that lot with another piece of property or you could only use that lot for something else. You couldn't use it to build a house on.
Actually, um, in the 71 code, and we carried it over, um, it says that on a nonconforming lot that was established before April 20th of 1971, in other words, was legally established when the code went in, a single-family dwelling may be erected regardless of the minimum lot area.
That was in the old code.
And it's, it's carried over.
Right.
And it talks about nonconforming lots.
Okay.
So, if the council, and there may be legal issues with striking that, but I think, again, this is just the...
But is that the concept?
The concept is that you can always build something on a lot, yes.
But that would be a nonconforming lot?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's on page 324, nonconforming lots.
Councilman Henry, then Councilwoman Clark.
So, this is kind of a question for Councilwoman Clark and kind of a question for planning, which is, I'm, I'm thinking specifically of your example of, uh, a corner lot in R8 that's only 10 feet wide. The example that I'm thinking of is when you have a block of houses, all of which are already, and all the lots on that, on that block are already less than 16 feet wide, that, okay?
The 2,000 block of Fleet Street, they're all 11-foot houses.
Sure, yeah, well, yeah, any, the, I know, the alleys, the alley blocks range from like 10 or 11 to maybe, the wide ones are 14. Um, so, the, the, my question is, my understanding is that the current code allows you to rebuild a house in a situation like that if the lot is empty. What I'm curious about in terms of your intention to change this is... No, I'm sorry, clarify, in terms of clarifying, is the intention of clarifying to make sure that someone does not, in another district where maybe it's R5 or R6, where the lot is 30 feet wide, and in that district, you're supposed to have, you know, 30 feet in order to erect a, a house? Is the, is the intent to make sure that, because under the current code, could you subdivide a 32-foot lot into two 16-foot lots and build two 16-foot-wide row houses?
You cannot do a subdivision of a lot that creates a nonconformity. You cannot create by subdivision a nonconforming lot.
Clear on, okay, thank you.
Councilman Clark, and then... Councilwoman Clark, and then we're going to vote.
Look, I'm just, I mean, you've, you're using the language you're suggesting I shouldn't be using to make, to clarify what this says. Later on, we do have a provision that a nonconform, if you've got a nonconforming lot, which we're now defining, you can build a house on it of any size, you can defy the requirements of the district. Now, that's what I read, okay? So, I've got lots of lots, and they've been sitting there for a long time, and they're nonconforming. I don't, they're nonconforming because they don't meet the requirements of what you can build in that district. I was just trying to give an example so that it would be clear to people who read, because later on, I'm going to ask that we amend somehow that house of any size on nonconforming lot provision. So, I'd like to...
Do you move?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark, move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Councilwoman Henry.
Oh.
Is there a question? A question or motion? Does the Law Department?
Yeah, I'm just trying to follow, and I don't mean to belabor this, really. But you could be nonconforming in your lot, even if you have more than just a square footage problem. So, I mean, I think we need to be clear here that your example is one way in which a house in a residential district may not conform to the lot, but there are other ways. And so, I think, from a legal interpretation standpoint, you don't want to put in an example that is more specific than the entire definition. That's definition, you can be not, you can be a nonconforming lot in both, let's see, it says here, both width or area. And so, you can be a nonconforming lot in multiple ways. There's nothing necessarily wrong with your example. It's just a very narrow example of multiple things. And I think, if you're going to vote on it, I want to at least put on the record that there are many other ways to be a nonconforming lot, and this is not trying to narrow your definition.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Henry, real quick, and then we'll go take a vote.
I would like to propose a friendly amendment to THHH, replacing the word "is" after "lot" and before "one", and replacing that with "includes", so that the amendment would read, "In a residential district, a nonconforming lot includes one lacking the required square footage to construct a single-family dwelling unit in that district." Yeah.
If, are you, do you accept that?
I sure do.
Okay. All right, so let's make a, make sure I write, motion was made, second by Councilwoman Henry, only amendment. Any friendly amendments from Councilwoman Henry? Councilwoman Rice Singer votes no. Councilwoman Craft?
No.
Councilwoman Craft, no. Councilwoman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
It's my example, yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilwoman Henry?
We fixed it.
Councilwoman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton?
It's not to...
No.
Councilwoman Middleton, no. Councilwoman Mosby?
No.
Councilwoman Mosby is no. THHH fails. We are joined by Councilwoman Vicki Spector. So, now, Councilwoman, we are on, what is that? T?
It's that, that's...
That TII?
III. I'm sorry, I'm...
And that's page 316?
Yes. This is, this is timely restoration required.
Wait, this is line 31 through 36.
31 through 36, and on 317, it's lines 1 and 2. It's, it's, it changes to that section. So, basically, these are all, okay. So, you can see my amendments. Let me go through them. Underlined is my, are my amendments. "A building permit must be obtained for the repair or reconstruction within one year from the date of the damage or destruction." And I add, this is when something, some use in your neighborhood gets damaged or destroyed. "Work must be completed within one year of the issuance of the permit, as determined by the issuance of a use and occupancy permit." In other words, you've got a year to get a permit, then you have a year to finish the, to repair the damages. That's one amendment. "The Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals may grant, and I say, up to a one-year extension of this period." So, they can give you another year, a third year, dated from the expiration of that first per, oh, yeah, of that first permit year. "Public notice and a public hearing are required, however, before, I said however, it's not here, before such an extension can be granted." And then finally, C, I replace and say, "If this extension is granted, and a use and occupancy permit is not secured by the extended year's end, the nonconformity expires by operation of law. Any further repair or reconstruction will require a new plan, new plans and permits to restore the structure as conforming with all use, bulk, and lot requirements of its zoning." So, what I'm intending here, you've got a year, you have a problem. You've got a year to get your permit to fix it. You have the right to get another year after that for, because you didn't get it done. After that, you lose your nonconforming use, because that's what it's about, and you have to restore to meet the code. That's what it is. Mr. Chair?
Before...
I'd like to move it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I would just like, yeah, I'd just like to mention
that during the regular hearings, we brought up the problem of having a BMZA grant an extension with no direction about either give it a time limit, or give it some standards. We didn't want, the unlimited discretion was probably not legal. And so, something like this amendment would fill that gap. So, that would be, that would work. Or, you know, we're not saying it must just be a year, you know. Some criteria was the kind of thing we discussed at the hearing originally, so.
Well, and it would be... Okay. We also concur and support the Councilwoman's amendment.
Oh, my God.
I think hell just froze over.
Joshua, are you still in the House?
With one exception, Councilwoman. Your item, your first line, T, and this will take care of three T-numbers at once, just for the committee. T636, which is just a bit further down, "The Planning Commission voted to change that one year on line 31 to two years, and that was with very convincing information from property owners that our insurance industry is often very slow in dealing with these situations." And they, property owners made some very compelling cases to make that initial one year, two years, because of the insurance industry. So, with, if the first one, it's one year, it's on line 31, and it's on your page, your very first line in your amendment. That one year to two year, and we support the whole thing.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Craft, then, you spoke, Councilwoman Craft?
Can I ask?
The very first one year would go to two year.
Yeah, let me change that.
That's, that's when I, that's all I was going to raise. I was going to raise that when you had one year, both on, on those, both in terms of insurance and in terms on financing, that both of those things gave a really tight window, because depending on the size of the project, it would be one thing if you were talking about having to come up with $100,000, but if you had to come up with $3 million, it could be a lot of...
Well, okay, so, can I?
Wait, Councilwoman Henry?
So, I had two questions, one legal, one a question about intent. The legal question is, can we make, can we have separate standards of time depending on the size of the project? And the reason...
I mean, you could, but it just becomes how much, you know...
Okay, the reason, the reason I ask is...
Then you need to define the size and everything.
I get the idea that for a really big project, it might take two years to put all the pieces together to get the permit. But I would also question whether or not we need to let the one guy who's got one, you know, broken-down blighted house, let it sit for two years before we make him do something.
Insurance is worse than money sometimes.
Okay, so, that was, that was, that was a question. Question's been answered. Second question in terms of intent is, in the, in C, if the extension is granted and use and occupancy permit is not secured by the extended year's end, the nonconformity expires by operation of law. That's the only one of these that raises the issue of nonconformity. And my question was, the whole section is about nonconforming? Okay, that's all.
But, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark?
Yeah, because that's the whole...
Councilwoman...
Tell me.
Microphone.
Oh, microphone.
And then, and then, then you can make a motion.
Yeah, okay, so, you're, so you want, I hear what you're saying. And I appreciate your comments about breaking it down by the size of the project, but I know, I thought about that, and I just couldn't figure out how in the world to do it. And so, you want, y'all have said, "Work must be completed within two years of the..." No, where, please tell me what you want.
The beginning, "A building permit must be obtained for the repair or reconstruction within two years."
Okay, within two years. That becomes two years.
It's the initial starting, because that's where the insurance companies...
Because, at, so, but must be completed at the end of a year. So, then, the zoning board can grant up to a year extension of the period, but they have to let people know they're having that hearing. So, that's the third year. I don't know what it is anymore. And then, yeah, okay. So, I accept the two-years amendment, and the motion's still on the floor?
Say there's notifications, they want to extend it.
Oh, actually, has it been moved?
I moved it, but I don't know if any...
So, you move? Councilwoman Clark moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Henry. Rice Singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft, yes. Branches absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Just to be clear, we have amended the amendment to make it within two years?
Yeah.
On the very first line?
Yes.
Yes, say yes?
Yes.
Henry, yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Sharon Green, Middleton, yes. Councilwoman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mosby, yes. So, we have six yes, with one absent.
I'll be glad when this is over.
And TII, that's TII, right?
Really?
Yeah, TII passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, for the record, that would take care of T636.
Wait a minute, okay, so, so that takes care of T636?
637, right?
636, or what else?
637 and 573, I think, I'll defer to Hillary on 573. I think it's definitely...
They said 636, 573.
And 637, unless law has additional changes there.
I'm just looking right now.
Okay.
So, ma'am, just for clarification, so 636 was amended into that?
Into Councilwoman Clark's.
And then, 573 and 637 would be withdrawn?
Hillary's just double-checking on those two.
Okay.
Oh, okay, good. Are we talking about TJJJ? Okay. Okay, so, yeah, I have, yeah, okay, just so you know.
Yeah?
Yes, 5, T573 is just taken care of without amendment.
Okay, so, 636 was incorporated, and 573 and 637 are withdrawn, right?
Uh, wait a minute.
These are planning? Yeah, I mean, planning and law. These are law. Okay, then, I would, law's withdrawing 573 and 637?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thing like that.
Now, withdrawal 573 and 637, and 630, and 636 was incorporated into that and passed, okay?
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's, let's take a motion, so we can, do we have a motion?
Yes, move to withdraw 573 and 637, and incorporate 636 into the past motion.
Okay, move by Councilwoman Craft. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. All three, the motion passes. So, Councilwoman, you have one more, which is TJJJ?
Here, I'll use this one, it's not marked.
That's on page 317.
Yes, I do.
And that's line 24 through 34.
Yes, sir.
Page 317, 24 through 34. Right?
Yes, sir. This is, this is different from what we just did, which was about destroy, damaged property. This is about, you've got a use going on, and it gets discontinued. And, under the law, it terminates under certain conditions, okay? This is something most of us are familiar with, because we've been to the zoning board about it, because people want that nonconforming store on the corner that hasn't been open for two years to be officially closed, and stop letting it get permits to be a corner store again. Okay, that's where I'm coming from. It's about chum and waverly. After notice, and so, what I'm saying is, when we get to what, on page 317, when we get to discontinuance or abandonment as an introduction to it, to what's here already, which is like the current language, I would like this added. "After notice by," that says that people have some standing, that there are some ways to trigger the officialdom's recognition that something's been abandoned for a while, and there should make sure they're not giving permits for that use anymore, which is where the problem lies. So, "After notice by a property owner, like the guy that owns it, a city housing inspector, like walk the streets, or nearby neighbors of discontinuance or abandonment of a nonconforming use for one year or more, the zoning administrator must declare the use terminated by operation of law. Written evidence from at least two households in the immediate neighborhood of the property may serve as evidence based on specific details verifying when the use was abandoned or discontinued." In other words, everybody knows it, and nobody knows what to do about it. People like me call down and put a flag on the file. It doesn't seem to matter if the wrong people didn't come to work that day, or if the wrong people did come to work that day down at the zoning administrator. So, it depends on who came that day, whether they get their permit or not. This just says, "We can be proactive and get this thing recognized in advance of some application as abandoned and lost its use." Thank you. I'd like to move that.
Councilwoman Craft?
Mr. Chairman, I, now, I don't know if this is for Laurie or for Hillary... Mr. Chairman, I, um, and I don't know if this is for Laurie or for Hillary, but I can't remember if anywhere in here, we have a definition of what constitutes a nearby neighbor?
I can do an aggrieved party, I've got the-
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Or two households in the immediate neighborhood, in terms of what that means.
I mean, I think that we haven't really looked into the legality of the concept, but at least with respect to those definitions, you've obviously hit on the point. I mean, what do you do if you, you, you believe as the owner, you didn't discontinue the use, and your neighbors are out to get you in some way, for shorthand? So, I mean, I think it poses a lot of problems in the implementation, but I'd leave that to, I guess, housing.
I agree with Hillary, I think it's bringing up more problems, and if I understand what the issue is, maybe we can find another way to address it. So maybe we could talk about that with, with Jeffrey.
Councilwoman Henry, a motion was made, question on a motion?
I, I wanted to question if it would serve, this is a question for Councilwoman Clark, would, would it serve your intent if the result of the notice by the property owner, the housing inspector?
Yeah.
Or the, if that triggered a BMZA hearing on whether or not the use should be discontinued?
It's not, I mean, basically, let me, thank you for trying to help me. And let me say that I have with me a letter that says aggrieved party from the law department, so I can substitute that for a nearby neighbor, because I've got a page and a half that says it's cool, and it's, but the issue is, if that's the issue, I'll, I'll substitute aggrieved party for nearby neighbor, and I've, I, I mean, I have every reason to believe that's a, a real enough and doable enough phrase. Um, I hear, the problem I'm trying to solve, I mean, if, if the right people come to work, then the permit, permit won't be issued. If, if they're not there, it gets, it can get issued, and then you don't know it. And then when you find out, you only have 10 days to oppose it, and you have to do that on technical terms. So what I'm trying to stop is, what, what I'm talking about is nonconforming uses that are a problem in neighborhoods, becoming repeated and repeated, even though they've run out, they've run the clock. Now, I, I don't know how else to do it, but it's a problem. Now, there are some neighborhoods that want nonconforming uses, and it's all like art shops and all kinds of things. I'm talking about places where it's a place where the drug dealers use as their marketplace, and I want, we want them, when it expires, gone. Make it your living room. But, all right.
Law department, then building.
What's the solution?
Then we're gonna go for a second and a vote.
Sure, certainly it's better to use aggrieved as the-
Okay, I'll do it.
Than nearby neighbor. But I think you have to realize, what you're, you're doing is, is saying that anybody nearby, aggrieved, whatever, you know, aggrieved person can tell the zoning administrator the use is gone, and then your language says the zoning administrator must declare it gone. I mean, at this point, you have an adjudicatory, a ruling by the zoning administrator, so this would put that person in the job of going out to these places and making some findings. I mean, the evidence is, is certainly helpful, but, you know, the aggrieved is one aspect, I agree that, that is a better word, but then on top of it, you, you now put the zoning administrator in the position of having to make a legal declaration about how the property's used. If you want to do that, I'd recommend flushing out how you want that done.
Okay, so, I mean, I'll take, I, I'll, all right, so, we got housing inspectors, we know how to take them by the hand, lead them to, okay.
Just do your rewrite.
So wait a minute, wait a minute, we, we're doing a lot of verbal things here today, you want me to try to get this rewritten?
No, I'm saying, I'm not saying defraun it, I mean, just focus on the point.
Okay, so, I mean, um, how about if the zone, let's go to the second point you made. How about if the zoning administrator shall undertake an investigation to determine, I mean, it is terminated by law if it exceeds a certain level, that's in the text, I didn't make that up.
Right, but you're, you're saying this person now has to make a factual determination that that law applies, right?
So, like, so Laurie's good at these verbal things. So, undertake an investigation to determine whether this property has been abandoned and, and is terminated by operation of law.
Right, I mean, and then you have, yes, then you have the issue that the property owner now has due process rights to come before that zoning administrator and argue that their, their use isn't discontinued.
I mean, that's fine, let them come.
I mean, where, how you have it now is that you are by law considered discontinued, and so when you go to get a permit, that, I see what you're saying, you, you go there and no one's made a factual determination about whether you were in fact discontinued.
You are, but it doesn't matter, and you get a permit, and all you can do is argue against permits for 10 days, you don't even know it's been issued, and all you can do is argue on technical terms, like they didn't spell something right.
Okay.
So, so how do we get in here? And, I mean, Hillary, if you would, and Sharon would take this, I need something. If you could take this-
Sure.
And see what you can write, because I know you'll get back to me.
Yeah, I mean-
And bring something back that meets this need, I don't care what you call it, I need it more than just, you know, what happens is, it's like lead poisoning, that, that requires a poisoned child to know a house is a problem. Well, here, what we have is, a bunch of thugs just moved in with a big refrigerator into a place that's been empty for two years.
Yeah.
How did they do that? They got a permit. Why? It's been empty, who knew?
Right, I understand your, your issue, and I'm happy to work on that with-
Let me, let me just say this, we, let me intervene.
I don't even have a second.
What she, what the councilman needs is language to where the law department and housing, you know, can work with.
Sure.
So, are you moving to defer this for the language?
I don't even have a second, so I, I would like to defer for language and ask Hillary and Sharon if they would be kind enough to-
Okay.
Put their heads together.
We could do that.
Sure.
Do I have a second?
Oh, I'm, I'm deferring.
Oh, I'll second, but most of the verbal-
All those in favor to defer it for language?
Defer for language.
With law and housing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, ayes have it. Uh, T J J is deferred for language. Yeah. Councilwoman Henry?
Yeah, and this is a, a concept question for a combination of housing, law, and planning. Has, has there ever been any, like, realistic conversation over annual recertifications of use and occupancy? Because, I, because it seems kind of, it seems kind of silly that the whole, that what, what we just spent half an hour arguing about, it felt like, was over the fact that somebody has to proactively tell the city that a use has been discontinued, and the reality is, the, usually the time we end up telling the city that this place has been discontinued is when somebody tries to reactivate it, at which point it becomes an argument over whether or not the reactivation is legal or not, and we argue over, has it been discontinued or not? So what if we just had to have people send, just like, check a box or something every year, saying, yep, my business is still up and going?
I mean, there's nothing legally wrong with that, except for the fact that the resources to do it would outweigh the problem. I mean, normally, everything is, you know, complaint driven, because that narrows the resources to the places where people care.
So, 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 just to be clear, just to be clear, if we're going to, if we're going to effectively say that from a policy perspective, we want to be complaint-driven for discontinuation of use, then we really should be encouraging neighborhoods to, at all times, you know, just regularly send in to the city, this business is now closed notices?
Yeah, I mean-
And just get it on the record.
And certainly you could, you know, if you want the city to factually determine whether a use exists or not, they have to go through a process that allows the owner some, some due process. So either you do it at the permit phase, and have a permit person go out and look, or you, the zoning administrator, or you create a whole new body called, like, Use Dude?
Doesn't the, doesn't the state have a master business license, or a master trader's license, or something like that, that the clerk of the court issues?
Not all businesses, there are different types of licenses for different types of businesses, so it gets a little tricky.
Gotcha.
We also already recommend community groups, as I'm sure you do too, you know, if they know there's a problem business, it goes empty, they take a date, stamp picture, and send it in. Um, and, you know, we always, our planners always recommend that people do that, and we get-
Okay.
You know, some do that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Craft, and then we're gonna move forward.
I just, and I guess this goes to Hillary again, um, I understand what we're asking you guys to do.
Right.
But, under the, I mean, under the code right now, the ultimate decision of whether a nonconforming use exists rests with the BMZA.
Right.
So even if we say the zoning administrator has this initial authority, you can go and say, okay, this business was no longer in operation, and you give this initial step, at the end of the day, it still goes back to the BMZA?
But you have to have a hearing, because if you adjudicate somebody's property rights, even when we do it in this council, you become a quasi judicial body. You're adjudicating somebody's property rights, you're gonna need some due process for that owner.
Exactly, so the question then becomes, if you're gonna set this type of process up, in order to, um, in order to solve the councilwoman's problem, um, you know, we get back to that issue we talked about some years ago now, I guess in this discussion, and is there, you know, is there a stay, or do we not have a stay, or something, so that we can give some-
At an administrative level, you would be designing the process you want. I mean, as it is now, the permit for something that is already nonconforming and has, the time has expired, the permit is arguably illegal. And so the question is, how do you want to raise that in a forum in which the property owner may protect their rights? And, and you get to create that at the administrative level. Once you go to the circuit court, standing and other things are determined by case law, but at the administrative level, you have a lot more play.
Right, so if we wanted to say that, when we're looking at this, that if the zoning administrator makes that initial finding, that that finding would stay in effect pending the decision of the BMZA, so that the-
That's good.
So that the zoning, so that the appellant, the property owner, whomever, could not get a stay of that pending that, we could do that?
Well, yeah, I mean, this person would have a right to an appeal, even-
Right.
At this point, if you're the property owner, and your use has been declared discontinued-
Right.
You know, you, you have a property-
Clearly you have an appellate right.
Right. Right to that, and if you don't provide an administrative forum for an appeal, a, a court's gonna easily graft one onto your process, or allow a fast track to the circuit court for review of that factual decision.
Right, my, my just thing is, in that gap, can we stop the process if we want to stop it administratively between the time that the zoning administrator makes the decision, and the time that the Board of Appeals makes the decision?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, it's gonna get tricky, because then it means that in fact, you know, where's the due process before the stay? This person has been, they claim they've been using their property, you just don't like them, your two houses down, and you say, no, you're not. And so if you get a process by which the city is now determined, simply on essentially, you know, one person's word, that the property isn't being used as the owner says it is, there has to be a point at which they get some due process.
Right.
And the stay, if it would be legal, and I haven't looked into it, is gonna be minimal. It's gonna be days, because that person is entitled to use their property until a body finds that it isn't. And so, you know, the process you have now, just saying it is no longer lawful, just is now driven by complaint.
Right.
And if you want to not drive it by complaint, you have to build in the due process.
May I just say one thing, Mr.?
Councilwoman?
I, I know, I just wanna say one thing.
Real brief, because we're gonna come back on this one to deferral.
No, 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 I, I'm listening to what you're saying, and I just want to say, because you all are writing this, that's not usually what happens. What usually happens is, the owner goes away to a faraway place, and then time goes by, nothing's happening, and then somebody that found him comes to the zoning board to get another nonconforming use for a, I don't know what, okay, a deli. Then we're at the zoning board with our photographs, our testimony, et cetera, but the zoning board's saying, oh, this looks like a good business. It's dead as a doornail, but they have the right to override the law, which they do on a regular basis, and say, oh, we like this, we need business. Well, we don't. In some places, need a commercial operation. So, if, there is an urgency, and it's not the owner coming in, in the situations and neighborhoods I'm talking about, who's like, been around and can say, oh, well, no, it's the new person. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, to move on, we, uh, T 693, um, there's no one that, I don't see a motion, anybody wanna make a motion on this? It's, uh, T 693, Vicky Walters, uh, this has got, it's got page 55, I, I, it's, it's not by any committee or anything. Do I have a motion on this? If we don't?
Oh.
Okay, no motion?
It's, it's, it's above.
Okay, failed by motion, T 693, failed by motion. We're now on T 646, let's go on T 4, 646, that's page 314, and that is, uh, Baltimore Parking Association, um, do I have a motion on T 646?
646.
Page 314, I don't-
Defer for language.
Yeah.
Okay, second, move for deferral, second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor to defer for language, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the ayes have it, it's deferred. Um, we took care of T 573, T 637, T 636, and now we are on, uh, T 575, which is planning on page 317.
Uh, withdraw.
Lines 11 through 24.
We're gonna withdraw, based on previous votes.
So, okay, do I have a motion to withdraw?
I vote to withdraw.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Do you have a second? Second by Councilwoman Henry, all those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the ayes have it. T, uh, 537, five, yeah, T 575 is withdrawn. We're now on T 57, we're on T 576.
That's covered-
Page 318.
Mr. Chairman, that one is covered by T 706, uh, the agency amendment, uh, coming up.
So?
So that should just be merged, and it, you have language for T 706. That's the sheet that DPW drafted the additional language, so it is covered there.
So what do you, what do you say, what do you want to?
Withdraw, it's a duplicate, it's-
Okay, so-
Withdraw.
Do I have a motion to withdraw, T 576?
Withdraw.
I'm sorry, it's too many, I'm gonna move. So move by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Middleton, all those in favor to withdraw, T 576, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, T 576 is withdrawn. We're now on T 577, which is planning, page 318.
Uh, yes, that-
What line?
Uh, the line would be line 34, and it is to insert the text that's in front of you, uh, as a new section, 18312. Basically, what this does is, um, we have one residential care facility in the city that is in a low-density zone, where they wouldn't be permitted that size, and this allows them to be there and, um, remain as non, um, to, to maintain their beds that they already have. they already have. For the record, it is for the Springwell, the facility on, councilwoman inspector, help me there, it's in your district, the assisted living, South Road?
Springwell.
Yeah.
West Rogers.
West Rogers. And this was a request of theirs. In our research, it wouldn't impact anybody else. It's only existing facilities, and the planning commission voted to support it.
Okay, do we have a motion to move? Moved by Cassie McCraft, do I have a second?
Microphone.
Do we have a second?
Clarification, what you just said, this only applies to this facility, how do we know that?
It was the only one we could find that exists in these districts. It says residential care facilities, lawfully in existence on the effective date of this code, shall be deemed permitted within the zoning district within which the facility is located.
Okay, she's got it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilman Henry.
Got it.
Vice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft, yes. Branch is absent. Clark? Clark, yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry, yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby, yes. We have six yes with one absent. T 577 passes, motion passes. We are now on T 706, planning.
Uh, yes.
Page 318.
Page 318. This is, this is a rewrite of section 18-311. You have the language in front of you. It is, it was in your package with color, I think Ms. Coates handed out a black and white version today as well. And basically, you can see the modifications, and DPW can further explain, but this is, would replace subsection 311 in its entirety.
DPW?
Kristin Oldendorf, representing the Department of Public Works. So the language you hopefully all have in front of you is what was drafted a few months ago at this point. And it simply clarifies that the changes being planned for the Quarantine Road landfill would be allowed under the new code. So just adds in language that it's okay that we make structural modifications. The expansion that's in the permitting process currently would be allowed under this.
Don't move.
Okay, moved by councilwoman Craft, second by councilwoman Clark.
No, no.
Where's this language?
Clarification.
Okay, I just ask that there was a second. Now, clarification, councilman Henry, you have a-
I'm sorry, I thought we were on 706.
Correct.
Okay, so-
You're on 706.
Where is, I'm sorry, where-
Page, right there.
Pardon?
Right there.
Ah, okay, thank you. That was my question.
You have a question?
I saw the page.
Cass woman, could you please use the microphone?
Uh, this adds landfills into a generic category with junkyards, et cetera. I just want to be sure that it's, you're doing it around one location. I just want, I want to make sure we're not expanding landfills into other areas through this. I don't think we are, but I don't know.
The reason this language is necessary is because this code expressly prohibits new land uses, landfills, as well as new junk and scrap. So this is for the purpose of the expansion of the existing, and the only reason this is necessary is because new ones are expressly prohibited.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Craft moved, second by councilwoman Middleton. Council vice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Sharon Green Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. 706 moves. We are now on T 638, that's planning, on page 319. This is what, line 23, T 638, page 319, and this is lines 23 through 35, and then extends to what, lines one and two, on, am I right?
Yes, and we will need to defer for language. We didn't, we're not able to complete that for today.
Okay, moved by councilwoman Clark.
Second.
Craft, second. Second by councilwoman Henry. All those in favor to defer, 70, 70, 638, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. T 638 is deferred. We are now on T 578.
That's line-
This also is planning, page 320.
And it should be line nine, and this is identical to the previous one, which gives two years for insurance.
Okay.
And it's line nine.
Do we have a motion?
Move to withdraw.
Move?
No, to, we're not withdrawing. We would, the, well, this is a different place, and this is in damaged structures as opposed to the use. So for consistency, we think it should be in both places.
Where am I?
It's line nine on page 320.
Okay.
Move 578.
Moved by councilwoman Craft, do I have a second? Second by councilwoman Middleton. Councilman vice singer votes yes. Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft, yes. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Um, where's, I'm sorry, please-
We're on the vote.
Tell me where the two goes.
Huh?
Line nine.
320, line nine.
Uh, yes.
Yes, okay. Councilman Henry is absent. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. That's five yes with two absent. T 578 moves. We're now on T 579, which is page 323, lines one through four. This is councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. Mr. Chair members of the committee, basically, I'm amending to add to a provision that is in the draft. 18-413, structures in hospital campus and educational campus districts. All lawfully existing structures that as of the effective date of this code are located in a hospital campus zoning district, or an educational campus zoning district, are considered to be conforming uses. I would like to, I'm moving to add that, to add a residential zoning in two places, so that in the title, it would say, structures in hospital campus and educational campuses and in residential districts, R1A through R10. I'm saying that structures that are now, as we enact, in residential districts are also conforming. And then I say the same in the text, that I'm adding them, because why not? Why throw them into nonconformities that make life difficult for additions, et cetera?
Councilman Craft?
Yeah.
So, so you mean like, all of my little corner bars and everything else would now be conforming?
Councilman, I think there's a typo. The last word is supposed to be structures, not uses. This is, this section, the entire 18-4, is under nonconforming structures.
I'm sorry.
So it's not uses, it's structure?
It's structures. This is about the building, not the use of the building. And so on line four, the last word should be structures, not uses. I have that noted here, but it's, I'm not sure that it got picked up as a technical amendment.
I'm just here, if I may make a pitch, please. We're rezoning the entire city of Baltimore, and we are taking our best guesses at how to do that based on lot sizes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, that's a huge gigantic remapping. People in good faith that are living in houses, or own houses, that are zoned residential, are all going to be rezoned. There's no, nobody isn't going to be rezoned, pretty much. And so we're, it's a way, if we're going to hold-
Can, can you clarify, just from my constituents, not everybody's going to be rezoned, because-
Okay, well, I know you did it early-
No, I mean, lots of people that are R8 are going to remain R8, they're not going to be rezoned.
Councilman, I know that you previewed in your district, on a broad scale, the rezoning that was transformed, and following your example, we did the same with planning's help in the Chum neighborhood because of urgent need to stop the breaking up of houses, okay? I understand that. So I apologize for exaggerating.
You don't have to apologize.
A lot of us are getting rezoned. And I just trying, we're holding universities and hospital campuses harmless, basically. I would like to do the same for our residential neighborhoods, and that's all.
Law department, can you, do you have any objection to this, or any questions?
We don't have any comments on this one.
No, just that that last word, the typo, it's structures, not uses.
That is a technical amendment that honestly, I thought had already been moved, the uses to structures, but if it hasn't, certainly, you know, that, that last word as the technical typo was, we've always noticed that.
Okay, so, we're going to have, we're going to move this, but it's with that friendly amendment, we're changing use to structure.
Correct.
We have a-
I'll accept the friendly amendment to change the word use?
To structure.
I mean, pardon me, structures to use.
Yeah, so Cass woman, you move?
I move the amendments, including that technical change.
Do I have a second? Second by councilwoman Middleton. Vice singer votes yes with the amendment. Craft?
Yes.
Craft, yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. So we have six yes with one absent, and so 579 moves.
Thank you, thanks, everybody. That's really important.
T 580, page 324, line 324, page 20, I mean, page 324, this is line 27.
Oh, my gosh.
And this is the law department amend to substitute, go ahead.
I think this is technical.
Yeah, I thought so.
Is this technical?
Yes.
Okay, so, this goes into technical. We now have T 581, page 324, lines 13 through 23.
Yeah.
This is 18601, nonconforming lots. Councilwoman Clark?
Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, what this says is what I was talking about earlier, and which Ms. Feinberg pointed out in advance. Basically, I am asking to delete this entire sec subtitle, six, that says, on a norm, a nonconforming lot that has been established before April 20th, 1971, a family dwelling may be erected regardless of the minimum lot area requirements imposed by this code, as long as the nonconforming lot meets all other requirements of this code, whatever they may be, and the owner of the nonconforming lot does not also own any abutting lot that can be consolidated with the nonconforming lot. In other words, if you can make it bigger, make it bigger. I, this, I mean, this is, yeah, move to just take this out.
Move by councilwoman Clark, do I have a second? Councilman Henry?
Second.
You're second. Council vice singer votes no. Councilman Craft?
No.
Councilman Craft, no. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
What's she, yes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby?
No.
Councilman Mosby, no. T 581 fails, motion fails. We're now on T 582. This is the law department, page 325.
Mr. Chairman, I think, we reviewed these yesterday, and we believe 582, 83, 84, 85, and 86 are all technical. They're correcting dates and numbering.
I love you, okay. So do I, I say they're all technical, right?
No.
It's just fix, updating the dates.
Okay. Okay, so, now we are on T 589. Councilwoman Clark?
No, 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 no.
We're on T 589, page 326. Are you with us, councilwoman Clark? We're on T 589, page 326, line one.
Excuse me one second. Okay, okay. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, five, where is it?
This is T 586, page 325, lines one through five. I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm on T 589, I'm sorry. We're on T 589, page 326, line one. Councilwoman Clark, is that technical you want to change? Go ahead, you have a-
Stephanie, do I have something here?
It goes together with 587, I believe.
What?
Amendment to renumber.
I believe it goes together with councilwoman Clark's T 587, which would be an insert, so 589 is the renumbering if the committee inserts 587.
So it's numical?
Help, hey, everybody, help me.
I think I just did. I think I just did. Your 587 is a new section, and if the committee concurs with that new section, then you would need 589, which would become technical as a renumbering. So I would suggest that the-
I'm sorry, I'm withdrawing these, I'm sorry.
You're withdrawing it?
Yeah, I'm withdrawing these.
Okay.
587 and 588 are withdrawn.
And 589?
I don't even know where that is, but it goes together.
You have a motion to withdraw?
Yes, my apologies, gentlemen.
Okay, you want to move to withdraw?
They're all withdrawn.
Okay, councilwoman Clark, withdrawals, T 589, second by councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. T 589 is withdrawn. We are now on, we're now on T 574, planning. This is page, what page, it must be a-
316, and it should be line eight, is not listed.
316? Wrong.
Oh, what?
What do you say, it's 316?
It's page 316, lines five through eight, speak to the expansion of a nonconforming use. The text as drafted says that a nonconforming use may not be expanded in any manner, nor may any structure be erected or expanded unless the use of the land and the structure are made to conform to the regulations. The planning commission, in their review of this section, voted to give back the authority to the zoning board to expand a nonconforming use by 25% in commercial and industrial districts only. So it would be after line- So it would be after line eight to say, "The zoning board may authorize expansion of non-conforming uses by twenty-five percent in commercial and industrial districts only."
Councilman Henry?
No, no.
Um, I would ask the Planning Commission, if they, the Planning Department, if they would be interested in allowing that flexibility as conditional by ordinance.
Again, that, yeah, I mean, it's, it's the committee's decision, I mean.
Yeah, 'cause I, I get the idea that there's a reason to allow for some expansion, but I, I think in light of the rest of the changes we've made to the balance of decision-making between BMZA and the council, this would be one that would fit as conditional by ordinance.
I'm just, this is only applying.
This is only, as the commission voted it, it would not apply to any residential districts. It would only apply to commercial and industrial districts.
So let me, so, are you saying that they would not be able? Okay, so they could not expand a non-conforming use in a residential district at all?
Right.
Now, because they're not non-conforming.
They can expand wit, up to twenty-five percent now. The board has the authorization in all districts today.
Well, let, if a, if a non, stay with me for a second. If a non-conforming structure, no, never mind, never mind.
This is the use section, not the structure.
Yeah, I know, I know.
This is typically, um, when you have a bar, for example, in a residential zone, there have been cases where they've gone to the board and expanded upstairs by twenty-five percent. And then a few years later, they ask for another twenty-five percent, and that, but, um, that's typically what it's been, that type of use, because this doesn't apply to the structure. This is a use within a building typically.
Right.
A non-conforming use within a building. Um, and the commission was convinced that there was good reason to allow that flexibility in commercial and industrial areas, but not in residential.
I, I've got, I've got language.
Councilman Henry?
All right, oh, Mr. Vice.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Henry.
Mr. Vice, so, um, I would, I would propose amending eighteen dash three oh three so that on line eight, after located, the period become a comma, and the additional language be inserted, or an expansion of non-conforming uses by up to twenty-five percent in commercial or industrial districts may be authorized by ordinance.
Would you take a friendly amendment?
Wait a minute, we haven't even.
Oh, second.
Hold on a second. We have an amendment, the amendment is from, we, first of all, we have an amendment from planning. So the question is, is this, are we substituting the proposed amendment from planning, or what are we doing?
Well, do we actually have language from planning?
We don't have a language from planning. Okay, so you have.
Then I'm proposing language to address some of Planning's concerns.
Okay.
Your language is fine.
Okay.
Okay, so now, okay, wait a minute, hold it. So let's have his amendment, so we know what it is before you start amending it friendly. Friendly. Okay, so, give us your amendment again, Councilman.
Um, at, after line, after located in line eight of page three sixteen.
Slowly.
We would replace the period with a comma and add the language, "Or an expansion of non-conforming uses by up to twenty-five percent."
Slow down, slow down.
Oh, sorry. Or an expansion of non-conforming uses by up to twenty-five percent in commercial or industrial districts.
Friendly amendment?
Amendment, it's not finished.
Oh.
"May be authorized by ordinance," period.
Okay, wait, okay, in, "commercial or industrial districts" "may be authorized by ordinance."
And if law could check me on that.
"May be authorized by ordinance," okay.
Amendment, just make sure.
Now, first of all, planning, does that, does that work for you? Okay?
Okay.
We don't disagree.
Okay, and law?
Yep, we're good.
Okay.
Okay, now, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, would you like to be friendly at this time?
Yes, I would like to add, um, with the exception of C one, C one V C, and I M U.
So here, here would be my, my point, is the point of doing it by ordinance is that lets each council person not do it in C one or C one V or whatever. But if there is a C one or a C one V somewhere.
So you're not accepting the friendly amendment?
I, I'm, I would.
Yes or no?
It's okay, I'll still vote for it.
Sure. I, I would prefer not to amend it.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend after line eight on page three sixteen by inserting the word, the phrase, "Or an expansion of non-conforming uses by up to twenty-five percent in commercial or industrial districts may be authorized by ordinance." Is there a second to Councilman Henry's? Councilman Mosby, seconds. All right. Okay, Councilman Riceinger?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Craft, yes. Councilman Branch, absent. Councilwoman Clark? Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Six yes, no nos, one absent, one abstention, it passes.
At this time, we will recess. The late news, the place committee will recess and reconvene at 2:00 PM. Thank you.